Roll call.
Commissioner Coats.
Here.
Commissioner Laird.
Present.
Commissioner Milne. Commissioner McLeeson.
Yeah.
Chairman North.
Here. All right. On up, we're gonna open up in a quarter per. Yes, please, and you'll feel turn that on so that the people can, thank you.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Pastor Bert Eldridge. I'm with the North American Lutheran Church, local church here called Principes Lutheran up on the corner of Beverly and Fifteenth Street. Before I start, I just want to make a really brief statement. I promise you it'll be a good thing. One thing that happens in a lot of these places, you guys take a lot of heat here, and I recognize that. Believe it or not, we pray for you all, all the time. And one of the things that I want you to know is that there are things you guys do, that all of you do within this county, that has results on the other end that you don't always see. I was a chaplain at the local county jail for eighteen years. And as I was up there, it was because you guys have supported that type of a program, et cetera, that we were able to bring out almost two hundred people out of some type of a street gang up there. The other thing is, is that within, I've been teaching down at the Rescue Mission for the last twenty years, how to teach people how to be, live sober and clean within our community. And that's because you gentlemen and the people before you have supported those type of things. And recently, when there's no cameras and there's nobody there, but we buried thirty-three people in the Collibarium that you guys had approved, of people and bodies that were unclaimed here in our county over the last twenty years. And I just want to say on behalf of the Christian church, as well as on behalf of a person raised in this county, born and raised here, I just want to say thank you for everything that you guys do here, because I don't think you hear that enough. So let us pray. Merciful Father, I thank you so much for the grace that you put through these people. Lord, that we know that your hand is the divine that puts all people into their positions, that you mend their hearts and you guide their hearts. And Lord, I just ask that you would give them grace and mercy as they continue to do the work that is set before them. Lord, that you would watch over their families and that you would watch over the families in whom they are over. Lord, thank you that you have given us a country in which we can openly pray in our own courthouse. Lord, that we have commissioners that would welcome the church in here to bless them. And Lord, thank you for the blessing that all of they, all of them are over us. And I ask that you would just do this in the name of your Holy Son, Jesus Christ, with the power of his Holy Spirit, all honor and glory is yours, Almighty Father, now and forever. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Okay, well, everyone, stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God. Kelly? Kelly, you're up.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. If you'll only just explain to us what's going on with your additional request. That's, that's the reason why we're having you here today, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was unclear. Um, so what has happened is, is that this is a particular, um, this is the only contract that Cap and C oversees that runs through the county commissioners, because it is required throughout the state of Wyoming for this particular service grant to go through the counties. That was changed in 2022. So you've been overseeing the same documents, the same grant each year. There has been no change because the funding has been static. The only thing that's different this time around is that rather than doing a whole new application, because of the current circumstances at the federal level, the Department of Family Services decided that they would just add a second year on. So they made an amendment for FY26. Our current contract, which is FY25, expires at the end of this month. And this amendment just extends it into FY26 for the same amount that is given to this county. We administer it on your behalf. And the two sub-grantees that are connected to us is Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and Climb Wyoming. Nothing in the budgets have changed, nothing in the allocations have changed. Everything is almost exact to last year's contract that was signed. It's just an amendment to add an additional year rather than doing the other process.
Okay, so my, my understanding is this is strictly a pass-through, so it's not costing the county any additional funds?
No, it never has.
Okay, well, I just.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that we have all that, you know, out so that everybody understands just exactly what's going on.
I appreciate that, Chairman. I just, it very clearly is simply passed through to those entities, but it's the only way that it can be received. Up until 2022, it was direct to Cap and C on behalf of this county, because at that time, that was the dynamic, but then it was changed. And so now we go through this process every year.
Any questions for Kelly? Those are the only questions I had, so that was pretty easy.
I like easy. It doesn't happen to me very often.
I do too. Yeah, enough stuff that's not easy. I like easy.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Colorado Hospital of Commerce County, you're up next.
For convenience, Chairman, I've got a small resume on each of these. Just an extra copies, just a really brief introduction to them. On, on your right, my left, is Alan Math- Mathlos, who's Director of Stifel's Public Finance Group for Wyoming and Colorado. I actually worked with Alan twenty years, twenty-plus years ago when we did our first hospital revenue bond offering in Commerce County. At that time, he was working for George K. Baum in Conference County.
Can I get you to talk into the mic?
Oh, sure.
Because basically what will happen is that nobody that's watching it will hear a word that you're saying. So, so if we'll talk into the mic, I would appreciate it.
I could use the instruction. Just to repeat, for the record, this is Bob Kaiser, I'm Chair of the Board of MHCC plus Summit Medical Center, and I'm introducing two of our most reliable people who would help with this bond offering. So Alan, as I mentioned, has a long history in Wyoming and Colorado on various finance offerings. George K. Baum, twenty-plus years ago, was probably a leading bond underwriter in the state of Wyoming. And they did our first revenue bond. And Alan was, this is Alan here, Alan was sort of the ramrod on that. He's handled many hospital revenue bonds over the last twenty years. And his thirty years of experience, he's probably had four hundred projects. Our Bond Counsel is Rick Thompson, who has his BS from University of Wyoming in nineteen seventy-nine and his JD in nineteen eighty-two. He's got forty years of public finance experience with literally hundreds of bond and financial offerings. And he'll be the Bond Counsel for us if this is approved. But I think the important thing is with these two men here, you have one of the best bond offering legal minds here, and you have one of the best at organizing and marketing the hospital revenue bonds. And both of those skills are critical to making this work. You have to have the legal side of it absolutely bulletproof. And then you have to organize the underwriting statement, the people that are going to participate, and then market the bonds. And so I will retreat, and if you, if you need us afterwards, Matt Danmeyer is here. And Matt and I can answer any other general questions, but these guys know things that I don't know, so have at them.
Well, as you guys start. But if you guys want to just give us a little background, that might be the easiest route to start out.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioner North and members of the Commission. I'm Rick Thompson with the firm of Hathaway and Coons in Cheyenne. And I've been doing public finance for longer than I care to admit. One of the tools we have at our disposal as cities and counties is the ability to issue industrial development revenue bonds. Those bonds are by no means unique to Wyoming. Probably every state in the country has similar statutes or statutes that do something effectively the same. But they're really an economic development tool that our legislature has given to us to help promote our local economies. These bonds are issued as no obligation to the issuer, so they are not a county obligation. There's no recourse against the county by bondholders for payment of the bonds. Bondholders can only look specifically to the revenues of the project which are being financed. And they are pledged for the repayment of the bonds. These bonds are not on the county's credit. You wouldn't report them on your financial statements because you have no obligation. Bondholders will be looking exclusively at the financial statements of the owner of the project as responsible for the repayment of the bonds. I want to read you a sentence out of the statutes that gives a little bit of the legislative purpose and intent behind these statutes that I think will, will help. And you may have already read this in, in the statutes, but it's short and I'll read it. "In order to facilitate and promote the local health and general welfare, the sound economic growth of the state of Wyoming, the development of its natural resources, the protection of its natural environment, the expansion of agricultural and agricultural related products, the provision of healthcare services, energy improvements, and to promote employment opportunities for citizens of Wyoming by creating or encouraging the expansion of manufacturing, industrial plants, processing facilities, and all kinds of business which contribute payrolls and tax base to the state of Wyoming, and by attracting to and encouraging the location or expansion within the state of such plants, facilities, and business, businesses all of which are hereby declared to be and constitute public purposes. The counties and municipalities of the state of Wyoming are vested with the powers and privileges hereafter set forth in this article." So what the, what the legislature has done is giving, given all of the counties and municipalities throughout the state a tool to help develop the economies in, in their jurisdictions by, by allowing tax-exempt bonds to be issued by, in the county name or the city name, but not on their balance sheet, not on their credit, and not on their obligation. So it's really a, a no-risk situation to the county. Let me give you a few examples of past industrial development revenue bonds that I have been involved with as Bond Counsel, to give you a little bit of the flavor. In two thousand and one, Buffalo Bill Museum in Cody wanted to do a thirty million dollar expansion of its facilities. It had some money from its fundraising efforts to its foundation. It had some grant money, but the majority of that thirty million dollars needed to be raised through a bond issue. Both Park County and the City of Cody, which were both eligible issuers because it was in their venue, were willing and able to be the issuers of those bonds. So what we did in two thousand and one, in late two thousand and one, Park County Commissioners issued a ten million dollar bond issue for the Buffalo Bill Museum. And the reason ten million was the number, because if you, if you're at or below ten million, they can remain bank qualified, which will get banks and financial institutions a little bit better effective rate. We came back in January of two thousand and two, and the City of Cody issued the remaining six point seven million of industrial development revenue bonds to fund that project. A successful project, those bonds have since been paid off. Another one I was involved with, when Saint Mary's School wanted to build a, a new school, a new private school in, in Cheyenne. In two thousand and seven, the City of Cheyenne issued nine million industrial development revenue bonds, and that school was built with those funds. Again, no obligation to the City of Cheyenne. More recently, in two thousand and thirteen, Laramie County issued one point seven million in industrial development revenue bonds to build the Cheyenne Animal Shelter. The funds were used to build a new shelter. The old one was, was dilapidated and they, they had outgrown it. Those are just a few examples. There's been many others around the state. I'm, I'm one of two Bond Counsel, Red Book listed Bond Council in Wyoming. I think my colleague Barbara Bonds recently retired, but I know she did several projects like these around the state. And they fund good projects. And if I'm doing my job today and I can successfully answer all your questions, I think the question you'll have at the end for me is, why wouldn't we do these? Because it, really in my mind, it's a layup. It's, it's no risk to you. The, the project owner is exclusively obligated on the bonds, not the county, in any way, shape, or form, under no circumstances. So I have Alan here with me. He, I know he's done a lot of these in, in other jurisdictions as well. And he can speak to a little bit about the marketing and sale of the bonds. I know there are questions about, you know, what's the market? Who buys these bonds? And do they understand that the county's not obligated on those? And, and the answer is yes, they, they do understand it because it's in the offering documents. It's on the bonds themselves. It would be in the bond resolution that would be passed by the governing body. So they do understand it, but I'll, I'll turn it over to Alan to maybe give you a brief background about the, the marketing and sale of bonds.
Question.
Sure.
And this is a question that, that has been asked, and I don't know the answer to. And it may be something our legal counsel has to answer. Is there a limitation on how many bonds the county can actually sponsor like this? And if, and if there are, what are those? Because I mean, right now, we, we have just paid off a bond issue that we had, that we've had, had for several years. But as far as the county being responsible, I know we're not responsible for the payback, but is there a limitation specifically on how many bonds we can actually support?
Mr. Chairman, that's a fair question. The answer is there is no limit. Again, what, what's really going to dictate the limit is the, the credit ability of the project owner. What will their financials support for a bond issue? What is the project? What are the proceeds being spent for? And those will dictate it. But as far as the county, there's no limit.
Okay, one other quick question, I hope. I know we've been told that this bond will not have a rating. Is there a specific reason why that? Because I know when you start talking about AAA ratings and stuff like that, your bonds are going to be easier to sell and everything else. And that's another question that I'd kind of like to have an answer on that.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you the first part, and I'm gonna turn it over to Alan, because now you're right in his wheelhouse. But most of the bonds we issue are unrated. To get a bond rating, you, you go out and you pay a Standard and Poor's or Moody's or one of those to come in and do a full-blown audit, to come to a site visit. Those are very expensive, very time-consuming. And you can get a rating that way through a cost. And what that does is it will give you a little bit lower interest rate on your bonds, or may make them easier to sell. But the majority of our bond issues in Wyoming, including our hospital revenue bonds, most of those are unrated, and the, and the market is, is, is used to those bonds. But I'm gonna turn it over to Alan to give you a little bit more detail on that.
Sure. Alan Mathlos with Stifel. So the, the easy answer is smaller hospitals cannot get an investment-grade rating. That's period. The bigger reason is the rating analysts and agencies are on the coasts, and they're used to seeing, you know, thousand-bed hospitals. And regardless of how profitable a, a rural hospital would be, it doesn't fit the criteria. And so you, you can't get a rating. It's just not a thing. So these would be non-rated, and that's, they would have a higher interest rate than a rated bond.
Okay.
Got a question.
Okay, Commissioner, next, or Laird?
So my understanding is, and I'm just gonna throw some math that's general out. And that is, they're seeking the bonds to finance purchase of the hospital, the twenty-nine million. And their interest rate's about eight or eight and a half percent. And if the bonds go out, their interest rates will be somewhere in the five and a half percent range. Am I kind of on track?
High five, slow six, correct.
So they're gonna save three percent there. So, so tell me how much money they're gonna save if we approve this?
So I think one of the things, as I understand it, I might ask Matt to come up, but one of the things I understand it is currently it's a lease. So, so they're leasing the building. So our charge was to try to structure a financing, if we can figure that out, where the payment on the lease is at or, the payment on the bonds is at or below the lease payment? Because right now, they're not getting, they don't own it.
Right.
Um, so on one way, you could argue they're saving an infinite amount, I guess, the total amount of the lease over the twenty years. But we're trying to structure the payments to be similar. But part of that payment, obviously, is principal, and then they would own the building outright.
Do you have any number you can throw at me at this time?
Well, I think the payment right now is about two point six million a year. It depends on how long we go out. If we borrow for twenty years, it's about a two point six million dollar payment, so it would be even. There wouldn't be any savings. If we go longer, then the savings could be half a million a year or more.
So I really appreciate you two gentlemen coming, because it's some knowledge that I needed. You come from a very fine firm. One of your partners, I graduated from law school with Brent Coons. Guy. So I'm gonna explain this so that you'll understand, at least from me, what I see my job is. So I think I've understood what the county wants to do here. And then I have to go see what the people of our county think, because they voted me in. So I spent most of this morning talking to some doctors. Former very, very well-known politician. They're all friends of mine. One of them had a pretty good question. And it's probably not in your guys' wheelhouse for this, so when the chairman comes back, I'll talk to him about that. And the people, the general people of our county, what they're thinking. And so it's causing me some great concern here. I'm not against this because they're from Commerce County. They're Wyoming people to me. So, and I'm really not against this at all personally. But I'm having constituents who say, please don't do this. And most of them are doctors. Now, I don't understand, they've explained it to me. And I get this comment, Dallas, we'll love you, whatever you vote, but we want you to vote no. That's what has been said to me about four or five times this week. So that doesn't influence me. But one of, one of the things that does bother me is, is that their hospital doesn't have obstetric, obstetric care here in our county, where if a lady needed to have, she's into labor right now, we have, apparently, we have, they have to drive to Douglas. So I think if, if I had, if, if I had my way, I'd say, well, gentlemen, are you gonna put obstetric care here and you're gonna, this lady's gonna be able to go here and have their babies? The other problem we're gonna be facing in a couple of years is that we have a contract with Banner to pay for indigent care. People who put that together were, on Banner's side, were very sharp, and they, they put an end to that. And I don't know when that ends, but that's hundreds of thousands of dollars. So we need a hospital who will say, we'll put in, this is just my opinion. I'm not speaking for them when it comes to this situation. I would like to see our ladies be able to get their babies delivered here in Casper. I'd like to really see that. And if I have any leverage to get that done, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna attempt to use that leverage. The other one is, is what do we do about our indigent care? At the end, now Banner is paying for the indigent care. Banner used to deliver babies. And all of the politics with all of this going on, I'm really not sure of the real intersecting, but I know Banner's a big company. The local guy's a nice guy, and he takes his orders from Phoenix. So now with Commerce County Hospital, I think the people that run it are sitting here, for the most part. And so, so I've gotta feel comfortable about a hospital that would take care for sure of Natrona County people. I know they're taking care of Commerce County people. They have apparently around two hundred people that, that live here in Natrona County, working at the hospital. I know a lot of people who work at their hospital and who like it and are happy. And I, I did hear some criticisms on their neurological care and a couple of other issues, which is not generally what you guys are involved with. But when it comes for me, both yes or no, I have to feel comfortable that if I do this, and the money they're gonna save, and the money they're gonna make, and all of that, that they're doing something directly for Natrona County people. Now, there are doctors who tell me we don't need two hospitals. There are doctors who say that, do you understand, Dallas, how this works? I say, I guess I don't. Doctor, tell me. Well, we have insurance companies. He says, when you go into the hospital, you don't ask, when you check in, you don't say, how much is this gonna cost me? Because your insurance pays for it. So then what you have is a situation where it's an insurance control issue as to whether they want to pay these guys or they want to pay Banner. And all of that, all of that, it's in my head. So I'll direct those questions to these guys, and I know you know, and I've talked to somebody from Stifel already. And I've had it explained to me, just a minute, Mr. Chairman. I've had somebody explain to me the numbers here. And I think that if we did do this for them, they should do something for, directly for our county. I'm looking at this indigent care business, because that's a very expensive thing to be just thrown on our taxpayers and not have a hospital that's doing that the way it's been done for years. And I want to see a hospital that takes care of our pregnant ladies where all they gotta do is drive across town. That's what I want to see. Thank you very much.
Commissioner McLeeson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gentlemen, I have a couple of legal questions, and maybe, maybe I'll start though with a bond question. My understanding, while this is a non-recourse, is that it still falls under the classification or category as a government-issued bond. Is that accurate?
It is. Excuse me. It is, it'd be considered a governmental issue.
And, and for either of you, I, I guess, Mr. Thompson, for you first, is Commerce County, or would Commerce County Board of County Commissioners be precluded legally from issuing this bond because the project is in, is an extraterritorial project?
Yes, that's correct. The statute on that, Mr. Commissioner, is fifteen one seven oh two. It's real short, that subpart AI. The powers of the counties and municipalities acquire one or more projects located within the territorial limits of the municipality or within the territorial limits of the county wherein the municipality is situated, if acquired by a municipality or located within the county, if acquired by a county. So it has to be, Commerce County could not issue these industrial these industrial development revenue bonds for a project in Natrona County.
This is an odd duck though to me in that it's Converse County Memorial Hospital doing business in Natrona County. And we haven't, I haven't had a problem with that legally. I see no prohibition on that. Have you, have either of you seen a jointly issued bond where you have a situation that's more like this? I don't think our statutory scheme really contemplates it, but where you would have both counties. One owns the hospital and the other has the, you know, has the real estate.
I have not seen that before and I don't think it could be done.
It doesn't seem to be contemplated by the statute. It's kind of a one county, one city kind of situation. Have either of you been involved in situations like this where you have a county or a city having the interest in the industrial activity or the hospital in this case, but that it is occurring in another jurisdiction? I didn't hear any of your examples, Mr. Thompson, of bonds you were involved in being, being similar where the governmental authority has a tie to a project in another county?
None of those examples. That was a situation. We do have situations where hospital districts can issue their own revenue bonds, but unfortunately, we're not dealing with a hospital district here. And they issue revenue bonds for projects within their county and also in neighboring counties. That's not unusual. We see that up in, like Lincoln County, for example, has some projects outside their county.
Is there any Wyoming case law that attacks the, alleges that there is not a sufficient public purpose? Any Wyoming Supreme Court?
No, there's no case law that I'm aware of on that question.
That's it for now. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, can I address Commissioner Laird's question, at least a part of your question, about what do you tell your constituents? I think it's important when you talk to them, the most important takeaway that a lot of people don't realize is the county is not responsible for the payment of these bonds. This is not a county obligation. It's not gonna affect their property taxes. It's not gonna affect anything in terms of their economics because it's not a county obligation. And I think, you know, once a lot of people understand that, that the county's giving nothing, it's not providing any financial aid, it's not even lending its credit to the project, then I think a lot of people nod their head, okay, I understand. There's really no risk to the county and the county's not out anything.
And believe me, I fully explain that to them. People I talked to, they got a complete full explanation of that. And the people last week got a full explanation of that. And I think probably everybody I've talked to, I make sure they understand it because they think they're gonna be taxed. And I want them to know there is no tax involved. And I'll say it again here many times, so that people who haven't heard and won't know that, because I do think that is out there among our community. But the professionals I'm talking to have different issues about hospital, number of hospitals and that kind of thing. And I do listen to our doctors. It wasn't too long ago, I had eight doctors in my office. I said, boy, this is, I've never been in eight doctors' offices in one week, but here's eight doctors. And a lot of them, they're concerned about a lot of things. And so I don't wanna go into detail on that, but they wanna see that this hospital may provide things that our people need. And those are the two things that were what I explained here a little earlier. Are you related to Thira Thompson?
I am not. I spell it differently. I have a P in my name.
I worked for her one time.
Great lady.
She was.
One, a couple of quick questions. First one's more of a statement. If the county votes to support this bond, I wanna make sure that it's on the record that the county will not be managing anything.
That is correct.
Won't be part of the hospital. We won't be managing the hospital. We won't have ownership like we once did in Banner, our WMC. That that is totally separate, that that is not something that we would have any authority over. We wouldn't have any management authority. And my understanding is that we couldn't put stipulations on anything on this bond as well. Is that correct?
You've stated correctly. That's all correct.
Okay. Second question is a little bit more straightforward and easy. Just out of curiosity, because municipalities can also sponsor a bond. Has City of Casper been approached on any of this?
I don't know the answer to that question. That'd probably be the...
Okay, all right. I just figured I'd ask because you brought up Park County. We're Park County and Cody were both partners in different aspects of that bond for the museum up there. So I thought I'd ask.
That's a fair question. Thank you.
Okay.
My question is why haven't they been asked? Not you guys, I'm not asking for an answer for you. I'm asking for an answer for the people who'll be running the hospital.
I'll let them address that when they get back up here, but I suspect it's because, you know, the economic development is to the county as a whole. I mean, their services are countywide. And so I think it's probably, it feels like it's more county because it's serving the entire county. But that's just, that's my opinion.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you for your time today.
Appreciate it.
If you think of any other questions, we'll be right back.
All right. We'll ask you if we do. If anything else pops up, we'll ask you.
Thank you.
How do you pronounce the name of your company? Stiefel. It's a very fine company. It's a very fine company.
You gotta turn that on. Matt Danmeyer, sitting on my left, is the CEO of both Memorial Hospital of Converse County and of Summit Medical Center. And I'm the chairman of the board of both of those. Commissioner Laird, I think you had a good question. I'd like to answer that in detail on the maternity care. And I will turn it over to Matt in a minute. You know, with the untimely death of Sam McNary, we lost the opportunity for both obstetric and GYN care. We were doing none of that at Summit. We did GYN surgery, but we're doing no obstetrics. We, and Matt can go into this in more detail, but we saw a real loss for the population here. And we tried to do a deal with Wyoming Medical Center and they refused. We tried to do an arrangement with other providers and they refused. And so on our own initiative, we purchased the practice of Sam McNary's practice. And in the meantime, what we've done, we've increased the OB-GYN physicians. We have three OB-GYN physicians that are now dividing their time between Douglas and Casper. That's at our expense. And we put the purchase price that was paid for out of, you know, Summit cash reserves. What do we do in the long term on the OB side? We've only been doing this since, what was it, March or something like that?
Yeah.
And so OB is not a moneymaker in any hospital. And what you see happening throughout the United States and in Wyoming, rural hospitals are abandoning their obstetrics. And it's because they don't have the simple volume to pay for it. What's happened with us, we've gone from, say, nine births a month to 20-plus births a month. And those are made up from primarily Natrona County patients who are traveling to Douglas for the birth of their children. And they seem to like that. Now, some of them are gonna stay here and have a birth at Wyoming Medical Center. And that's a perfectly fine choice. So we're new to the OB part in Natrona County, but we're not new to it elsewhere. Traditionally, we've gotten OB patients from Platte County, Campbell County, and other surrounding counties. And it's interesting that women are willing to travel for OB care. Second point, what do other doctors say? You know, healthcare is fundamentally a business. And physicians are in the business. And do they really want competition? Does Banner want the competition from Summit Hospital? I think you'd have to ask Banner that. But if you wanna improve Banner, have a robust and competent Summit that provides a standard of care that Banner needs to meet. Summit Medical Center, for the last many years, has either been a four-star or a five-star hospital. And that rating is based on the opinion of the patients. In the book that I provided you guys before, we have over 40,000 patient visits a year in our hospital Summit. We're doing, I wanna quote these numbers correctly. This is not a small hospital. It's a significant hospital. By the way, our current investment in Natrona County is $24.6 million. All of that originated from MHCC. So if you look at the politics of it, we've taken cash from our county and moved it to Natrona County. We didn't have to do any of this. But we see an opportunity to create a real center of excellence in medical care in this area. And it's far beyond just Natrona County. We have 203 employees. Our annual outpatient volume is 46,000 people. Now, those 46,000 people wouldn't continue to come unless there was a level of satisfaction. And then they vote.
Bob, I'm gonna let Commissioner Coach, Commissioner Coach has a question, so.
Shoot. So I appreciate the comments on the 24 million, but let's call it what is. It's not altruism. It's business like you.
It's what now?
It's not altruism. It's business like you explained. So question, I guess Mr. Danmeyer can maybe answer this. So to get to the meat of what we're looking at here. Some of the healthcare providers in Natrona County reached out to me and voiced some concerns. One concern is, what assurance can you give that Summit will coordinate with Banner and other providers? This isn't just about Banner, just to be very clear about this, and other providers on trauma care, specialty referrals, and emergency planning rather than fragmenting services in the community?
So I appreciate the question, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Coats. You know, I'm actually excited that I hear that there's some disruption happening because I came two weeks ago and I said, we're gonna build a quality system here. And I talked about the fact that in Cheyenne Laramie County, they're running much, much larger healthcare infrastructure than we have here in the central part of the state. And so to answer your question, should we be coordinating better? Could we be coordinating better? The answer is yes. But we didn't, we're not parading physicians in here and trying to convince you. We are offering something that your constituents are choosing. They're choosing to enter our system. And I would say that they're choosing for the same reasons that some of those physicians are in some of your offices. They are nervous about the caliber of care that we want to provide here. So, you know, I feel like I have bent over backwards, working not just with Wyoming Medical Center, but all of our partners. And the truth is, is that we're such a small state that if we're not gonna band together, our care is going to end up on planes leaving here for Denver, for Utah, for, you know, Billings, to Rapid City. We need to have a strong infrastructure. And this is the county. This is the county that should be doing that. And so the question about why do we not go to, you know, a small municipality? Why do we not come to you? Because there's seven counties that should be feeding.
It doesn't. Switch mics. Yeah. There you go.
Can you hit go? There we go. So when opportunities come to expand Wyoming Medical Center with hospital revenue bonds, Elkhorn Rehab Hospital, Wyoming Behavioral Health Summit, I agree with Mr. Thompson. This should be a layup. We should be trying to incentivize as much activity. Again, that document that I sent you after the last meeting that talks about the difference between the size of Natrona County's operation, you all should be concerned that our patient base, not just yours, not just Natrona County, but the counties around are leaving. I consider myself to be as collaborative as they come. We, you know, I heard the phrase, this is business. Who's making all the money from our efforts? We are a public entity. We do this because we believe in it. We believe in the ability to provide care to the people in Wyoming by people who actually live here and care about it. So from my perspective, let's create the pathway so that we're incentivized to work together to build something much more powerful than what we currently have.
So you're a public entity, but you're public slash private because Summit is partially private, correct?
Summit is private, but it's owned by a company that's owned by a public entity.
I wanna be clear on that. And I guess the only follow-up I have at the moment. So if patients require inpatient or specialty care, are they gonna be directed toward Memorial Hospital, which is a county subsidized hospital, which, you know, enjoys a critical access hospital funding? Are we gonna be engaging in directed care practices?
I'm not 100% sure. I know you have the specific question you're asking.
So essentially, are you going to be taking people that have insurance strictly at Summit and then directing Medicare, Medicaid patients to Memorial Hospital?
So a little over half of what we see at Summit is Medicare. So Medicare doesn't pay us nearly as well here as it does Banner or it pays us in Douglas. It's, I think, advantageous for us, not just for Natrona County, but for the whole state. We have some services that we wanna offer. I kind of alluded to one two weeks ago that aren't even available in other hospitals. And some of those services are specifically targeting the Medicare population. Is it advantageous for us to do that, to base some of those services out of Converse County and a critical access hospital? Yes, it is advantageous. But again, I'm a big believer that, you know, patients should have choice. They should be able to decide, do they wanna have their baby in Natrona County, which has at least twice as many births as we have in Converse County? Or do they go, do they go where they think they're gonna get the best care? I think all of you and all of your constituents want the ability to choose excellent care. And so, yeah, we would love to create some pathways that make it exciting for people to come to us, regardless of their payer mix. And I would say that's one of the big things. You know, I work, my primary employer is a public entity. I, you know, I'm gonna say this, it may sound unpopular, but I don't believe in wallet biopsies, figuring out what people can pay and then deciding what level of care they get. I began my career in the behavioral health world where I was trying to find services for people who had no ability to pay. And, you know, you heard, you know, in the prayer today, the gratitude from somebody who's worked in that population. I don't know that gentleman, but what he said rings true. Let's try to get care to the people that live, you know, in the state of Wyoming. Yeah, put some pressure on us, you know, to try to work well together. But to me, there's nothing better than having good quality choices and let the patients decide where they wanna take their business.
I'll ask another question that I have been asked because, obviously, is Summit planning on bringing in an emergency room?
So, you know, healthcare is, it's a very competitive environment. You know, we didn't come here with a very, you know, specific plan. We're gonna do X, Y, and Z if we buy this building. We wanna expand what we offer. We wanna look at every single thing that we offer. We have to make sure we can pay for it. We wanna pay for the bonds if... We have to make sure we can pay for it, we, we want to pay for the bonds if we get bonds. You know, we have a lot of hopes of growing the hospital. But, but we're not really in a position to say, if these bonds are passed, we're gonna do this service, this service, or this service. And it's just, it's probably not appropriate to, for us to be laying out our strategic business plan in front of the, the general public or our competitors. So I, I'm, you know, we're not, we're not taking a firm stance on exactly what we're gonna do. We're gonna look at every single offering, we're gonna try to see what we think people need. I will tell you that obstetrics was not on our, on our list of things that we jumped in. We did that because we knew there were lots of women who didn't have strong enough payer sources to get patient, to get providers to take them on. And frankly, we said, you know, we can probably absorb that and it's grown. It's grown because of what we're, what we're offering, way beyond what I thought was gonna happen when we, when we acquired that practice. Which again, as, as Bob alluded to, we did not, we did not really like the idea. It's not something we did for business purposes. We did it because if we as a society and we as a, you know, a state. Make it hard for women to have a baby, and you're seeing that shutting down obstetrics, that's been going on for ten years in Wyoming. We want to be the antithesis of that, so we stepped in and, and did it.
All right, the nation's a little bit more complicated. I've been involved with a lot of nonprofits, a lot of profit organizations over the years. And I realize that a lot of times the difference is in the name only. Explain to me why Summit would be better off as a for-profit instead of a nonprofit organization?
That's really interesting, you're saying Summit would be better off as a?
No, I'm saying, explain to me why it's better off as a profit versus a nonprofit organization?
Well, actually Summit looks.
I know it's, I know it's a for-profit right now, but it's not a nonprofit, I'm just asking you.
Well, uh, there's a distinction. Summit is wholly owned by MHCC, which is a unit of government. And it's through the unit of government that we pay no taxes. So Summit pays no taxes. When you say profit versus nonprofit, we're not a 501(c) for example, which is a true nonprofit. And Banner is a 501(c)(3). We derive our tax-free status by being a unit of government. And Summit is a unit of government. So it is tax-free because of that.
Okay, well, like I said, I've worked with both and a lot of times it's strictly in the name only. Doesn't really, doesn't really necessarily mean anything. I've seen for or nonprofits that actually spend their money on a lot of things that, uh, that they shouldn't be spending on. Very large arms industry was one of them that recently got in trouble for doing a lot of that stuff. So that's just a prime example. So I understand that there is a difference, but I, I just. I mean, you explained a lot of that, the fact that you are an extension of Memorial Hospital of Converse County. And you're actually working as, under that, under that umbrella of the week.
It's, you know, I think this is, it's an interesting question. When I first was asked to be on the board, they were very proud of the fact that they were nonprofit. And I said, well, you've certainly been good at that, and they had never made a profit in the history of the hospital. But I explained to them, that's their tax status, that's not their business strategy. And if you don't operate on a, a positive income, even a small positive income, pretty soon you go extinct. And, and healthcare is a very difficult, uh, system to manage. The reimbursements are basically below cost. Even though we're a critical access hospital, it's still a below-cost reimbursement. So. The, the, the real secret in, in healthcare across the United States is you have to do enough. Medical procedures and often that's surgery. But it's surgery, radiology, a little bit of lab, and that pays for everything else. One of the reasons that small hospitals are abandoning the OB is they can't, they don't have enough surgery to subsidize the OB. If you're a very large hospital and you're doing, you know, a thousand OBs a year, yes. But there are very few hospitals in Wyoming, I don't know if there's any that are really making money at OB. But it's, it's an essential community service that we subsidize through those few profitable services that we do. And that's just the reimbursement system that we live with.
Commissioner Laird.
How do you pronounce your last name, sir?
It's Dan Meyer.
Dan Meyer?
Yep, Matthew Dan Meyer.
They probably beat you up a little bit in high school, didn't they?
That is a, a perceptive comment.
An understatement, so to speak?
Correct.
So, so I gotta get back to the political side of it here. One thing that would probably cause me to turn over in my grave is this. If I vote yes, and you turn away people with no money that are indigent. And you won't take Medicare and Medicaid patients. Take care of our elderly in this county. I'd figure out a way to come back. That's how I feel about that, so talk to me about that.
So we, as I said before, a little over fifty percent of our patients at Summit Medical Center, the hospital, are Medicare. So we see a lot of Medicare patients.
Medicaid.
Medicaid, we have the same policies at Summit that we have in Douglas, which are. What you would expect for a charitable organization like a critical access hospital that's an extension of government.
I don't know what to expect.
So that means that we have an obligation to provide services regardless of ability to pay. We, we have, we don't have to at the LLC Hospital Summit, but we have the exact same financial policy at Summit that we have in Douglas. And that means that we serve people when they come through the door.
What about the indigent?
The indigent, we serve a lot of people that don't either pay their bills or can't pay their bills. And we have the financials to prove it. So we, in both locations, we are writing off a lot of care. And I said this two weeks ago, that part of the advantage that we have is, is that we are not trying to build a private business to sell someday to somebody for a lot of money. We are not a for-profit entity that is trying to get rich. There's no mechanism for us to do that, we can't buy and sell hospitals for a living, so everything.
Let me get, let me, let me redirect you back to my, my issues here. Uh, I'm not against competition at all, I think it's a good thing. I'm worried about our elderly people because they're afraid to go to some hospitals. And so many elderly people I know. My wife works in an assisted living and she tells me stories I don't like hearing. As a lawyer, I don't like hearing them, and as a commissioner, I don't like hearing. So, as I said, Banner has to take care of indigent people up to a certain level. Is there a number on that, Mr. Chairman, it used to be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year or something?
That, that's an agreement that we have with the pension centers or sheriffs that they take care of a lot of that.
Do you do that down in your hospital in Douglas?
We do.
And how much do you, how much, do you have a limit on the, the number?
I, you know, from a business standpoint, it would be nice if I could say yes, but we don't. We, our mission is to serve the people. And you're gonna have a lot higher percentage chance that's gonna happen in a, in an entity that's government-owned than an entity that's a private business. I'm just, I'm just gonna be very candid.
How do you, how do you feel about handling those kind of people? Our sheriff has sent some people down to Summit and they have no money.
Again, that's, that, that's probably the irony of this conversation is that we are offering, we're, we're the third owner in ten years. This is not an easy business to run. We're running it because we believe in what we're doing. We believe in people getting care. And, you know, the example you used earlier this afternoon about obstetrics, that's not even a business we wanted to get into. We got into that because the people needed to be able to have a place to have.
Are you gonna get into it?
You know, I, I would love to think that the, um, that as competition rises, that more women will choose to have their babies here. Instead of getting in their car and driving to either obstetrics or we get, every day, somebody drives from Natrona County to Converse County for emergency care. That's a daily event, it shouldn't happen.
Yeah, and it, and that's, that does disturb me that it's happening. And I'm hoping that if you, if you're able to do this, that you would take care of those people. Either, either way, whether, whether we do it or don't do it. And, you know, he asks you about the ambulance service, and I have no personal objection to you having your own ambulance service. Now, I know there probably is some objections around. But I'm also, you know, I've lived here my whole life, I'm a Republican, I think competition is good. And businesses should run legally the way they want to, as long as they're taking care of the people who live in this county. That vote for all, all five of us. You've got four people here today, and if there was a vote today, I don't, I don't know that there'd be, it'd go anywhere. My problem is, is I have a lot of friends who want me to vote against this. And I, that's a pressure I don't like. And I've told them all, and they know me well enough, that I'll vote the way I think I should. When I feel like I've gathered enough information. I, I've never heard from any of the members of your board of directors back there. And I, you know, I served on, as a board of director on Wyoming Memorial Hospital for five or six years. And, uh, I, I, I had a good taste of understanding running a hospital, I didn't know how to do it. It was one of the toughest boards I've ever been on, the doctors did it. But, uh, my, I've always just wanted to take care of, uh, our people, period.
Well, you know, there, uh, Public Law eighteen eight one oh six requires. That memorial hospitals provide resident indigent patient care. It's sort of the term of art. Our gross charges are around twelve million dollars a year that we eat in resident indigent patient care. There's no upper limit on it. The net on that, because we only get about forty-four percent of charges. Our net on that is, say, around six million dollars a year of cash out-of-pocket costs. Of that, our county commissioners provide around two million dollars a year as a supplement for resident indigent patient care. They do subsidize the ambulance service and so forth. But we've never turned a patient away that I know of. We've taken patients from other counties that are indigent. I'm actually proud of the indigent care that we give. We don't have time for the stories. But I am really proud of patients that we've taken care of that have no ability to pay.
I know you've had some dents, and I know people don't like to talk about their dents.
The what, the death?
The dents.
Deaths.
The things that didn't go well for you.
Yeah.
And I don't know if you want to say anything about that, I'm not requiring that. But we get people in here all the time and, um. They give us their best shot, but we also know that nobody's perfect.
Well, you know, this is a, you love this, a non-physician talking about this, but I have no limits. The, the way to have zero deaths is to don't, do no surgery, do no OB, and do no emergency department. The three areas that create liabilities for deaths are your emergency department. Your OB, if you don't deliver a perfect baby, you're gonna get sued. And then surgery. So if you look at national statistics. C-sections have a death rate of one point four per thousand. So out of a thousand C-sections nationally, you have a death rate of one point four. The way to avoid that is to do zero C-sections and then you'll do zero obstetrics. Now, we're much better than the national average, but you can go through each type of surgery. And the statistics are well-kept and you can see what the risks are. Now, the risks increase exponentially with age, with comorbidities and so forth. So here's the dilemma, we have a patient come in that has heart disease, hypertensive, diabetic, and needs surgery. The patient is seventy-some years old, it's in a wheelchair. The doctor would like to say, send him somewhere else, but we can't do that. The doctor realizes that they're risking their reputation by doing a surgery on that patient. But the patient is gonna die without the surgery. That is the persistent and common dilemma that we face in that hospital. And it's, uh. And the legal system exacerbates that. You know, I could, you and I could have a, a long conversation about that.
Thought just came to me and I'm gonna end it there. I'd feel a lot happier if you lived here in Natrona County where I could come and knock on your door.
You know, I tell you.
I would do it, I bring me and my little dog, we go around and we knock on people's door and they invite me in and we have a nice conversation. I gotta be sure about this for our people. I, I, I think you'll run a good hospital, I do, I don't have any problem with it. I, I don't want to see our whole healthcare system wrecked because there's a couple of entities battling over patients and not, and not taking care of elderly people. People who have little funds, really sick people and wanting to send them up to Denver in an ambulance. And charge for that and all of this, these fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollar airplane flights? And then ask, tell them the parents, they've gotta pay for that? I see all that as a lawyer. And, uh, so, um. I, I just looking out here, none of these folks have ever said a word, but they all look like good people to me. And I, but I have, I have a, I have a contingency that don't, does not want me to vote for this. And I'm struggling about that right now.
I've told you about our dilemma, that your dilemma, uh, you can tell, we have, uh, uh, correct me if I'm, I'm wrong. I do not know of a single incident where we've ever turned a patient away. I just, we don't do it.
I think the closest thing to that, Commissioner, is, is that we do, in both of our hospitals, we ask, and so do our competitors. They ask for upfront money. And sometimes people who on paper look like they should have the ability to pay say that's, that's too much, so. And, you know, I, I know we need to, I, I, you know, uh, Mr. Chairman, I don't want to take this all day. But I would say that we, we recognized before we came here, we hoped actually that you would be under some public pressure. Because to me, that is the sign, that is the greatest compliment, that people are truly afraid of us coming and continuing to grow. Because we are putting services that people are choosing. And, and that, that evidence that, that there is public pressure tells me that we're doing what we, what we came to do, which was to offer services. Tomorrow, we have a meeting with the commissioners in Converse County. And six years ago, when I, just my wife and I decided to come back to Wyoming, I emphasized to them, you need a new hospital. You need a new hospital out on the interstate, visible, capable of drawing patients from the whole region. When the Summit opportunity came up, we said, well, maybe we can sort of split the difference. You know, we can, we can put a foot in both counties and we can have sort of a, a joint operation. You know, I, I think there's enthusiasm, uh, for, for potentially expanding what we do in Converse County. And I would say, you know, I, I, I respect whatever decision you all make. But that will certainly, you know, be on the tip of my tongue if, if we, if we can't, if we don't want, you know, if, if this is something that your constituents don't want. That makes it pretty easy for us, you know, let's go centralize the location. We already know patients will travel to us, they, they are traveling, they've been traveling for years, so. So again, that's, that's our thought, let's try to do this in a collaborative way, back to, you know, Commissioner Coats's comments, um, earlier. I, I'd like, I'd like to think that we're small enough as a state, especially with some of the federal dollars coming. We need to build services and Natrona County needs to have way more services than it currently does.
So you've mentioned interstate, it's the second time I've heard that today about, because there was a hospital built here. Out on the interstate, which Banner now, now owns. And I know the reason it was built there was because of the interstate issue. And what does that mean when you have it on the interstate? What, what benefits do you get out of that?
A, a few things, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Laird. Workforce in healthcare is so important. You know, we're in the people business, as we always say, we need workforce, we need upcoming talent, we need young people, young nurses. Driving by hospitals and saying, wow, that looks like a wonderful place to work. In fact, I've even said, if we decide to build a new hospital in Converse County, I want to spend a couple extra million dollars on the landscaping alone. It has to be high, it has to be visible, we need the workforce, number one. And number two, there's a lot of traffic moving up and down I-25. We need the workforce, number one. And number two, there's a lot of traffic moving up and down I twenty-five. And we need people to say, oh, that's the specialty hospital that people are willing to drive from hours away to come to. So today, hospitals are rarely built in hidden places. They're built in places where people can see them, and they can become comfortable and go there. So, and, and one last thing that we didn't talk about today, we really should have, is we provide a humongous percentage of the primary care in this town. And that is subsidized care. We don't make money on primary care. But if you do any research at all, you will see that we provide a huge percentage of that.
Explain so that people watching this that may, primary care means, please.
Primary care is what most of us think of when we think of going to the doctor, our doctor. The doctor who guides us through the ups and downs of life, that if we, if we need a doctor, we go to that doctor. Um, that is not our surgeon. It's not our oncologist if we get cancer. It's not our obstetrician if we have a baby, if we can have a baby, if we're a woman. Um, not specialty care. It's the basic care that we need day in and day out. And as Bob alluded to earlier, primary care is not lucrative. And we provide a very sizable amount of that in Natrona County, and there is no one that can compel us to do that. We do that because the need exists and because we believe in what we're doing. So again, I mean, I, I, I wanna sound as collaborative and positive as I can, but this is, this is a consequential vote. This is you all representing your constituents, I think, and saying, hey, we, we think we want more of this or we don't. Um, we certainly can, we, we can adjust, you know, based on, you know, your representation of the constituents.
So just one thing, not, not a question, more of just a follow-up statement, um, to some of what I've heard. So constituents that reach out to me, it's, it's not fear so much. It's not, um, uh, fear of competition so much as it's a concern for the individuals they see day in and day out, you know, the county residents that are seeking healthcare. These are local doctors. They're not, you know, always represented by Banner or the, you know, the giants that they are. And, you know, they're concerned that, um, Summit as a profit center is coming here for that. And I understand that you say you subsidize care, you know, through the primary cares, but primary cares, um, it's pretty easy to see that they are a uh, nexus for referrals to large areas. So, so, you know, I understand there's a degree of altruism, but there's also a degree of business there. So, um, I do appreciate what you're saying, though. So, thank you for that.
You know, there's one thing that was not addressed, and our two colleagues back here. If you decided to move ahead with this, there's an inducement letter that, and I gave Tracy copies of this, and I think she's given that to you. And it's really a letter of intent. Uh, if you decided you wanted to go ahead, then you need to look at that inducement letter and, uh, say at your next meeting or whatever, sign that. And the reason for that is that, once you decide to go ahead, there's a cascade of activities that's gonna occur. It, none of it is a burden on you, and none of it costs you one dollar. But you're gonna have a preparation of the offering statement, uh, and, and that will be this thick, and it's gonna, uh, it, it take months to schedule that, uh, has been laid out. We're looking at a December date. Say, if we start it today, we're looking at December to actually get into the offering of this. And that, that whole timeframe is people working very hard and diligently. But nobody's gonna start it unless you, uh, are able to sign an inducement letter. And I like the concept of a letter of intent. You have another opportunity at the end of the process, when you vote one more time. And now you have the offering statement, you have, uh, what the market is telling us, and then you say, yes, we would like to go ahead and issue the bonds. And it, it would be unlikely, but you could also say, no, in spite of all that information, we're not going to. Let me just check. Am I correct?
It's actually called an inducement resolution. And I have an extra copy of that.
Yeah, that would be good. Thank you.
Tracy had, Tracy has that.
Yeah.
Yeah. But that's, we, we didn't touch on that point.
Okay.
You know, just one thing, uh, you know, what are we gonna do? If you look at this book, this, which I gave all of you, and you look at the, uh, table of contents on healthcare, and you look at all of the different services that are provided, and then you look at, look at our, our whole pain clinic in the Diamond Building. You know, uh, look at neurology in Santiago's practice. Uh, we, we are, we're just not dilettantes here. We're committed. And by the way, I don't, I'm not getting paid, so there's no profit opportunity for me. But this state educated me, and they sent me out into the world with a University of Wyoming education. And I was able to make a little bit of money so I could afford to come back and live in Wyoming. And I'm paying it back.
You live in Douglas?
I live outside of Douglas, uh, you know, on a ranch. I've never actually lived in Douglas. But my address is Douglas. And by the way, all of these people are the same. And, and Matt, uh, Matt could make a lot more money at a large urban center hospital. But he's a UW graduate. He understands this rural ethic. We take care of our people, and we're really proud of it. One, sometime, if you have a couple hours, I'll go to all the stories of lives that we've taken care of.
I got a feeling he's a pretty tough guy.
You what?
I got a feeling he's a pretty tough guy and an intelligent guy. I would really like your board to stand up and tell us their names and introduce themselves and all of that.
I have, we have two board members.
That's good. There's three peo, three peo. Thank you.
I grew up in Wyoming, actually, here in Casper, mainly. Uh, went to University of Wyoming, and I'm actually living in Llano, but I work, uh, at the. So I actually work in Detroit. Just to call me real quick, some of the questions that have been asked, I think, uh, are what will you do, uh, if, if we pass this? My response to that would be, we're already doing it. We're already serving the people of the county. We have been for, since we purchased it, uh, we're already providing indigent, excuse me, indigent care. We're already providing services that maybe they wouldn't be able, maybe not the quality of care. This opportunity just allows us to invest more and provide better care and, and venue more services down the road. So, uh, maybe you can look at it that way, like, we're not a new business. We're not trying to buy the business. We're already open. We're already operating here and have been. Uh, we're already, we're already serving the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Fosso. Surgeon. I hold this one against, I was born in Canada, uh, this is twenty-sixish. I joined the military in listing and got a citizenship that, I'm sure that they're African, that. I trained in surgery, uh, there, and finished up my time. I have a beautiful woman from Wyoming, Douglas. Decision that we were gonna go somewhere else, and there were a few reasons for that. Uh, I had a few impetus, and I was deployed and elsewhere, uh, realizing that our big issue was in throwing communities. Um, I thought that the way to counteract that was actually robots. Because what you can do with the robot, you can do much more complex surgeries, but you could do lower volume is still to a great outcome. So, uh, on our exit, we, uh, we looked at her hometown. I met Matt, uh, two years ago. Correction, three, three years ago. I was still living out there, so I came down and, uh, tested the hospital out. He's kind enough to go out to allow me to do that. And we started working with robots, and after that year, truly realized that this is the place we're gonna be. So my wife got to move back to her hometown. I had the privilege of joining her. And since that time, we've truly been combating, uh, of all the uses of the world, we've been combating roleism. That role is, uh, is in healthcare. A lot of times, there's not competition that, that drives progress. You see a lot of unsatisfied patients, not just with the surgery that they get, with interactions. When you have competition, uh, it, it increases the standard of care, even as somebody has interaction with that patient. Uh, the more and more I do this, the more and more I become convinced that, uh, that rural care gives something else. Especially since, uh, we had the discussion of nonprofit. I'm a surgeon that doesn't make a dollar based on surgery that I can, that salary, that's the way I will share it. That's the way I, I actually want to keep it. It's the way I appreciate it. There's no obligation to go outside of my scope, to push the limit for a financial benefit. But there is, uh, a desire to do what's right. Now, whether that's the model that keeps everybody ticking, I don't know. I don't know how that goes to Banner. I couldn't find people. From my perspective and my thoughts on healthcare, remain as such, where I, I, I think rural care is the most help. I think it's the most competition, and I think it's the most under served. So I remain in this capacity to try and do my best for the next twenty years, as long as they keep me here, to build our community and, uh, and, and give something, hopefully, back to the community. Not as much. It's just the ability to, uh, to give competition and give the patients.
Where in Canada?
Certainly. Actually, California, so everybody that grew up there, they're down to the plants.
Is that close to London?
London is about.
Yeah, I'll, I'll tell you why I asked you that after the, if I get a chance before you leave.
I appreciate the indulgence of time. By the way, Dr. Sokol and Dr. Shawn are two of the best robotic surgeons in a five-state area. They train the trainers, and we're doing all of our robotic surgery in Casper.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, board. Appreciate you guys coming in today. Answered a lot of the questions that I believe we had. So, all right. Thank you. Tina, you wanna come up? You're up next. All know Sabrina. I think we all know Tina, too.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I wanted to introduce Tina Holheinrich from the Casper Area Chamber. Uh, she's gonna talk about chamber membership today and the benefits that it could potentially provide to the county.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thanks for having me today. Um, I do just wanna start off, um, by identifying a couple of classes of membership that we do have. We have our standard paying members. We have reciprocal members, and then we also have courtesy members. So to be perfectly clear, the county is a member, but under the courtesy standard. What that means is we just identify that you're a huge part of this community. We want you to be welcome at the table. Um, we want you to feel like you belong. Um, and while we wouldn't turn your money down, I don't necessarily think it's, it's critical to our partnership and working together. Um, I did pass out some membership brochures. And honestly, I think it's important to understand, uh, the context of the ask and, and why I'm here today. Uh, when Sabrina was working for Mills, um, they were incredibly active in the chamber, active in chamber luncheons, in Leadership Casper. And at some point, when you're paying à la carte or full price for all of those things you may wish to become involved in, it makes more sense to pay a membership fee. And, and that's simply the truth of it. It's not that we would not welcome you to the table or to any lunch that we have. Um, it just is about the level of commitment and the level of involvement, um, the county wishes to have with the chamber.
Any questions for Tina? Quite a group today.
Anything else you wanted to highlight?
Anything else you wanna add, Sabrina?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, uh, I have enjoyed the membership previously because of some of the offerings that they have, such as the luncheons. They have the post, pre, and post legislative luncheons. That is really nice to see what's going on with our state legislature, and especially in my possession with our planning and zoning. Some of those things are very critical to be able to keep in touch with. So that's one of the things. And then the state of the community addresses is another thing that we really get to know what's going on with the, with City of Casper and just all the different entities that, um, can kind of keep us informed and keep us working together.
And truly, I think that that's true of all of our lunches. I mean, our next lunch next week is going to be the Airport Board and an opportunity to meet the new customs agent. Following that, we will be hosting a net pits with Visit Casper for a community update on tourism. Um, and then in November, I'm not sure what that will be, but it'll be great. The other program that I think is important to highlight, um, is the Leadership Casper program. We are just getting ready. They have had their mixer, and they are going to spend September night, or September eleventh, um, in tourism. Um, that evening, we will be spending the night at the Trouton Inn and really expose those new leaders and growing leaders um, to what it really means to have tourism in, in Natrona County specifically. But when you think about the cost of growing a leader, uh, the cost of that program is incredibly cheap at fifteen hundred dollars. Um, you can spend fifteen hundred dollars on one trainer. And when we bring trainers into the county, we typically spend five to ten thousand dollars. Um, so it does add up, and we just wanna, um, recognize that fact and make sure that you're aware of the opportunities to partner with the Chamber of Commerce.
Okay. Any questions for Tina? All right. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
We're gonna take a, about a five-minute break, and we'll come back. So. So. Okay. All right. We'll call a meeting back in. Commissioner's Discussion on Gambling Revenue. Ashley, do you have information on that?
On the gambling revenue? I do not. That's one thing that Lita did not tell me about. I'm not sure. My apologies on that.
Tracy, have you got any information on that? I know that they requested, this was information that they requested for us to discuss as far as gambling revenue, where, what we would like to do with it. This is because right now it is not allocated specifically. And this is additional gambling revenue, so I didn't know. I apologize for not having anything in front of me, but I thought that...
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Go ahead.
When I, we got the numbers from Michelle on what the amount we received. My initial question was, have we had conversation on what we were going to use that money on? And I hadn't recalled the conversation. That's why I kind of reached out and said, "Did we?" Because I'm not remembering anything. So I guess that's kind of where my question lies, is had we had a conversation? And if not, I'd be good, I did.
And I think, I think we definitely need to have that conversation as far as what we're going to do with it and everything else. So Tracy, do you know what that, how much that was by chance that we're sitting at right now? And is that going to be a perpetual revenue source like a lot of the others are?
Mr. Chairman, I don't. I don't have any knowledge of this. Haven't, I can certainly dig into it, but I, I'm not prepared to answer any of that because I don't know.
Okay. All right. I guess at this point in time, we don't have enough information to really have much of a discussion other than what we just had. So if we can get that information so we can, for the next meeting, I'd appreciate it. And we can, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I just think we should be clear on what we're asking the clerk and/or staff to do. So is the conversation, how much money have we received over the last three years? And what do we have in our budget for this year? And what does that trend look like? And what are we forecasting? You know, we haven't seen a new, a new gaming facility in the county for a while, but we have a dozen roughly of them. And then in terms of the use, you know, right now, I think those funds just are part of our general revenue and get, go to general expenses. So can we maybe identify or more narrowly tailor the request of staff and maybe of us so that we know what the discussion topics are as it relates to gambling revenue?
Mr. Chairman, in reference to Commissioner Nick Leeson's comments just now, I didn't recall having a conversation where we specified or restricted gaming funds for anything in particular. So I guess that was my question. Had we had that conversation? And did we plan on using it for something in particular? Or if it was just in our general fund revenue?
And if we're using it for general fund, I don't have any problem with that. I just, you know, I just want to make sure that we're on board with whatever we're doing with it so that we're, we're in compliance with what the state statute is and have an idea. So Commissioner Nick Leeson.
My recollection is that it's always been just into the general fund, and we just have it as our forecasted revenue and budget with it accordingly.
And I don't have any problem with that. Does anybody else have any issue with doing that? Because I know, I know that was one of the things that was brought up, you know, with the WCCA. The projected revenue was all gambling, was all in there, that we all got, you know, when we got that, that formula.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Angie Van Houten, on August 25th, sent to, I think, every county, every county commissioner, Department of Health requesting, and wanting individual from each county complete the survey, requesting information regarding how the county has used or is using, using funding through Wyoming Statute 924-104, which is intended for the prevention or treatment of problematic gambling behavior. And so if that's the genesis of the discussion, I don't know if anybody's filled out that survey. And I don't know that we've had any sort of conversation about trying to deploy it in a prevention type of manner. I know that our opioid task force is, I think, doing some, some good work and right in the middle of the opioid funding. Of course, that's extremely limited in how that can be deployed. But has anybody filled out that survey?
It was forwarded to Anna.
So I'll get that, I'll get that filled out this week. Because, yeah, yep, yep, I will. So, and we'll get that, we'll get that taken care of. So, all right. Any other discussion on that? Okay. Ashley. Legal updates?
Yes. So I guess first, I'll just ask, does anyone have any questions concerning any of the items on the consent agenda?
Was there any, any public complaints or anything about this liquor license? Being transferred? Oh, well, yeah, but there's still some...
We'll have to come that up during hearing.
Were there any written disputes?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Laird, I have not heard of any.
Thank you.
Neither has the legal, the legal department. Any other questions concerning the consent agenda? As for a legal update, I know that Lita did send you all a legal update on Friday. It details several items that we are currently working on. If you guys have any questions on those, please let me know. But in addition to what she put in that legal update, I just, there is a couple of other things that was not mentioned. So first off, we are working on finishing up the zoning regulations, those amendments. We're hoping to get that out for public comment here soon. The goal is to get those amendments to you all by the end of the year. That is Sabrina and I's goal, is so we can get this, you know, get those implemented by the end of the year. Additionally, I am working with Lori and Code Enforcement. We're going to try to start filing some of the code cases into court in the hopes to get some of the most egregious properties, you know, into compliance, get those cleaned up a little bit. We're going to start with her top three right now to kind of just test the waters a little bit on how the process. So that's another big thing that I know Lori and I are working on and that we were working on last week. Any questions?
If we don't have anything else, then I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for property.
I actually would like to get into some Commissioner's Discussion, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, on the Memorial Hospital item.
We can do that now. Yep.
Memorial Hospital?
Yes.
On Summit.
On Summit, who was just before us. I wanted to have some discussion on that. So, Mr. Chairman, you mind if I make a few statements?
No, go ahead.
So first thing I wanted to mention is, I got some numbers here. In August alone, Banner Health did 71 deliveries. Last week, they did 17. Banner is working to bring more OBs here to support the OBs that are here, that are doing deliveries in the hospital. So we aren't without deliveries here. Part of the issue is that MHCC Summit did purchase an OB clinic. And part of purchasing OB clinic is, you know, utilizing the services they have in Douglas. So it's, it's not that we don't have those. You know, I think the core issue here from a lot of the people that have talked to me, reached out to me about this is that we, while Summit is here and they have the option to go through a traditional loan route like any other private entity would, you know, they're asking us to do bond issuance primarily because of their, their ties with a county-run hospital on this. And for me, I, I just can't see going down that road where we can't get commitments to, will we, won't we open an ER? That could potentially put the county at some risk down the road with indigent care that, you know, that Banner taking care of now. There's always the rule of unintended consequences for this. So while there may be no cost to the bond issuance, I think the, in the greater scheme of things, there are costs to our providers that are here, that have been here, that have been taking care of our residents here. And that's one of the primary things that, the themes that I have been prepared with. And as the comments here, I appreciated Summit and Memorial Hospital of Commerce County being here. But, you know, I don't want to see a dilution of services in our county in the quest for profit, which I think is a real risk.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'd like...
Commissioner Laird?
For me, the whole process is a juggling kind of process. And I don't think any new business like that, especially healthcare, I think it's good for our community. And I think that it, it can cause people that are maybe operating on glide to really get their program going. And I've always been, I have always thought competition was a good thing. Now, I'll say this. I voted against giving the bonding issue to, to Banner for two reasons. One, number one, is that they weren't in compliance with the $9 million they're getting a year. It was setting in a bank account somewhere, and it wasn't being used by anything. They were just strictly out of compliance. And so I don't, I don't even balance telling them no with anything to do with the Douglas operation. The other thing with them was, they said that they wouldn't use all the money in Wyoming. It would go in their corporate money bag, and it'd be used in different places, in different states. So that was the reason, and I never, I never said the reason. I just voted no on it, and the majority of the commission voted no on it. Now, on the other hand, you've got a, a hospital who has a building here. It's apparently worth about $29 million. You have doctors from here working there, nurses from here working there. Most of their businesses are residents. Want to go there. Want to make the choice. If they don't, it used to be like downtown, you had the America Theater and the Rialto Theater. And if you didn't like the movie at the America Theater, you went to the Rialto Theater and vice versa. At least you had a choice. So I don't, I don't see, the arguments that I've been given for people who want it are, are the residents who want, who say they want to go there. And that, that's almost overwhelming, that the contingency... that the contingency of people who I think have voted us in want that. Now, uh, there's another contingency of people who I consider really good friends of mine that are in the medical profession that don't want it. Most of them are retired. Some of them aren't. So for us to, it's one thing for us to hold, zip up our, our purse strings or cost us money. It's another thing to, to not engage somebody who wants us to issue a bond issue. And I could conceive of, of, of a business where I may not want to do that, that I, maybe gambling or somebody that wants to start a marijuana farm or something like that. But I think we've got, that hospital's helping a lot of our residents. And I think to, to make it harder on them and more expensive. I, I'm gonna have to deal with that in my own mind. Because I, I'm having a difficult decision to make and, and, and juggle the balancing act. But I'm always for the people and what they want and what helps them. And where they can get care and things that they want. And we, we struggled a little bit with Banner. The issues that were there. They're a big, huge corporation that's not even stationed here in the state. Now you've got a little hospital that's stationed here in the state. They're fifty miles away. And people, actually, those board of directors, I, I know some of their relatives. And so I feel comfortable with that. I feel comfortable with being able to go over and knock on the door to their house and say, what's going on here? And I, I can't do that with Banner unless I drive down to Phoenix and then I wouldn't be able to see anybody anyway. So, you know, people can say no for different reasons or yes for different reasons. But I'm gonna vote on this issue if it comes to a vote for the people of this county and what they're telling me. And I'm gonna listen to all of them. And it's just been really interesting this, this has come up and, and how commissioners look at different things. And I don't like saying no to anybody. All my life as a kid, I had people saying no. Some of it was probably worthwhile, some of it wasn't. But I, I, I don't have a crystal ball either. These people are gonna be in business no matter what. Now, if you had people saying, we, we want you to put them out of business, would you vote for putting them out of business? I, I wouldn't vote for putting them out of business. They're investing their money and they want to do their deal and all of that. They're not getting free money. They're putting out bonds and they gotta pay the bonds back and the people buy the bonds, make money on that deal. So I ha- I haven't really heard anything that they're doing that hurts our public. I have heard a story or two about some healthcare there that who knows what the real reasons for it were. I've heard the same thing about Banner. And but I do believe in competition. I believe it's a powerful American force to make people step up and be counted for. And I know in my own profession, if you, if you can't, if you can't do that, you're gonna get trampled over by every lawyer in the state. And people don't want to hire that kind of lawyer. They want a lawyer who's gonna win. I'm the kind of person that I go into a hospital and I've got serious problems. I want them to fix it and I don't want to be sent somewhere else. I've had issues with them sending people to Denver, not Summit, but Banner. Didn't have the resources here, people having to drive their kid up there, wheels falling off the ambulance, this and that, and this and that. I think competition might make Banner what we would really like to see it as. You don't want competition? That's your own mindset. But I have to say, I still have not made up my mind. I'm glad we didn't have a vote today, Mr. Chairman, because I, I wanted to try to get enough out of these people. So if anybody watches this meeting and the press reports it and people can get interested in it, I'd like to see what more of our public has to say about it other than the people I run into, which is quite a few every day actually. And I ask those questions. And I don't have, see anybody dodging me. Not one that, they like hearing about what's important in their county. So I, I, I can't, I can't. And, and the people that were all here seemed like darn good people to me. They really did. And I think I, I could. Everybody wants to sell their best point. You go buy a car here, the, the guy I know is a salesman. He still wants to sell me the car and he's gonna tell me all the good stuff. I know that. Most people know that. You don't like to have that happen to you in healthcare. But it's controlled by the insurance companies. Thank you.
Commissioner Nicholson, any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I, I have a lot of thoughts. I have a lot I could say. We don't have the proponents here. They all left. Don't have anybody at all here other than the folks sitting at this table. So I suppose people could be watching this online or they could watch it at a later date. I think at the time, if this comes to a vote, you know, I would balance the overriding concern with not having government pick winners and losers. But I, I know government does that every day at, you know, different levels for different reasons. And this might be a pretty good reason to do that if it's gonna improve healthcare in Nitrona County, which I remain passionate about. And I think that Banner has improved the quality of its care and improved how they're not only treating patients, but treating their, their healthcare professionals. I haven't heard nearly the same number of complaints or concerns from patients or, or professionals that I was hearing a year and a half, two years ago. So I think there has been improvement. We turned down Banner's request. Now, they, they had committed to spend up to, as I recall, eight million dollars here in, in Nitrona County at this facility. So I, 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 I am comfortable that they represented that they would spend money here. I was not in favor of that for a few reasons, including that they didn't provide a lot of requested information and documentation. And, and it was a concern to me that there really wasn't a commitment to spend actually that eight million dollars was up to a certain amount. I'm, I'm aware that Banner has moved forward with some of those things that they knew they needed to take care of. They found the money or found some money. And, and so again, that kind of goes to progress. And it also goes to kind of free market capitalism. And, and if there's a market, I think there will be competition. And, and maybe Summit can determine that, you know, regardless of what this commission does, they want to invest more into this community, which, you know, I, I welcome that competition. Thanks.
I've had a lot of our constituents reach out to me on both sides. The fact that Summit has been here for several years already. They already have that facility and basically all they're doing is looking at purchasing it at this point in time, business-wise, that's a good decision. The fact that they took that long to be able to get the owners of that facility to agree to sell them. I think most of us have been in similar situations before where you really want something and you just, until somebody decides they're gonna let you have it or sell it to you, then you're just kind of at their mercy. So I, I understand that completely. Part of my concerns, they answered today, the fact that this would not affect the county's bond rating. It would not eliminate thus our ability as a county to enter into other bond agreements. The fact that the county is not going to be owners in Summit in any form or fashion. I think those are all positives. The negatives? The potential in the emergency room issue as far as funding goes, that, that's a big, that's a big issue. I know that was one of the biggest concerns that I heard from people that were against this. I do think that, you know, I, I remember when Mountain View was here before the county purchased that. And I thought that was a great asset to the county at that time. So I do think that there is a possibility and I think there's an avenue for moving forward. I do appreciate the fact that Summit is willing to stay here, whether we give them this bond issue or not. I would like to see them present this to the city as well, since Summit is actually within the city limits and not strictly in the county. Think that that would be advantageous. I think that's something that we, we could, if, if this moves forward, this, I think that's something that we, we could share. I get the feeling that this board is not ready to make a decision at this point in time as a whole. And personally, I would like, I would like the entire commission to make that decision and vote on that commission as a whole. And not just, not just four of us. But that's my personal preference, but I will entertain any other thoughts that anybody else has.
Just have one final thought. This, this, this notion of competition, the competition is already here. So let's not make this about, do we like competition or not? The competition is here. And, you know, they may be doing a fine job. They may not. That's, that, that's not for me. That's for the patient base. So this isn't about competition. So let's, let's, let's not really get into that because they are here, they are competing and, and that's fine. And it, it does bring in better services. So that's, the core of it is that.
Bring in better what I didn't, I didn't hear what you said.
Saying that this isn't about the notion of competition. This isn't completely about.
It brings in better something.
Competition can bring in better services. That, that is true. The concern is the overarching concern of the constituency that's reached out to me on this. Some of which, you know, is very heavily vested in the medical system here and understands those, the nuances of it much better than I do. You know, it's dilution of services, services that right now that we have that aren't at capacity, that are at half capacity and duplicating those services and, and bringing down the collective quality of healthcare because the services can't be fulfilled. We, we aren't a massive state where, you know, five hundred thousand person state. So all aside, I, if, if we aren't ready to move forward to a vote, we can, we can move on with the meeting. I just think it was very key to say, the competition is here. So this really isn't about the competition. This is about the healthcare state of the county and the consequences of, you know, bond issuance and expanded service to where they're needed, which is, which is fine if this is about needed services, not just about, you know, potential for more profit and potentially harming the system that we have now.
Well, I have a comment.
Commissioner Laird.
I'm glad you said that, Casey, because it, it was something in my mind. You know what we're really talking about here? This is like somebody who wants to buy a building and move a business into it. And some people don't like that. So they run down the banks. They don't loan them the money. And then they want us to, they want the board of directors of the bank not to loan them the money. Now, we're not even loaning any money. We're giving them the authority and then they have to deal with steps, stifle or stifle or stifle to, to get that done. So all, really, the truly, we've, we've hit some issues that probably aren't really even in our purview, except for one thing. With them being able to buy the building, save money on, on finances, get it. So it's basically, they're buying it for a little less expense. And they want to put, I'm assuming, put that money back in the hospital. Is there's a business that is helping our citizens? Now, now so far, it sounds like they are. I mean, it sounds like they are. They got plenty of. I'm guessing, what did he say? The percentage of Nitrona County, of their businesses in Nitrona County is pretty high. And, and the number of people who work there that live here, I know some of them. So it's really only, gee, you guys, we don't want to help you get your loan and save a little money. Doesn't cost us anything. But, you know, we have the power to do that. So that's what we're doing. I don't think it's gonna affect our health, one, their health one bit. I think they're gonna keep rolling and they're, they're going to do well. And that's why I don't lose a lot of sleep over our vote.
Is that why?
But I'm, I'm, I'm wanting, I'm wanting to, to, what, I, I'm still trying to figure this out because I hear the, the side that's against it. And I don't know that it has too much to do with the bond issue. I think it has to do with other issues that we have no authority to deal with.
Commissioner Nicholson, did you have anything else to add? Do you guys want to wait on this? Cause that's the, that's the feeling that I'm getting is that you guys would like to collect a little bit more information before we present this. If not, that's fine. If it is, that's fine too. Whatever the.
I'd like to see it.
Pleasure the board is.
I'd like to, to wait, Mr. Chairman. You mentioned you were gonna do that. So I didn't think I needed to comment anymore, but I would like to wait mainly to see if the, the local media do anything with it and then how that might stir up the public and see if something came out of this that we hadn't thought of. And because I think that, I think that we veered out, most, most of the big points that we veered out aren't really even anything that we have anything to do with. Ours just still is, yeah, we're gonna put you into a deal where you can go borrow some money. And, and there's no skin on, off our nose or our teeth or whatever you want to say. And so.
All right, well.
There you go.
So we will table this until our next meeting. Allow more information to come in. And we'll go from there. Before we get into any further discussion or going to exec, I did want to bring up something that's on the consent agenda tonight. And it was just the letter that we, that we agreed to. Basically to help the nine one one dispatch. There's a, there was a request into GIS for us to have a statewide address, home address system or national, or business and a, a home address system. That is, that's been a problem for a long time because our database is incomplete. And there's a lot of places when you call in, it's like in Pineville, if you call into nine one one, it actually goes to Rock Springs. And so this would help eliminate some of those issues that are associated with that as far as our nine one one service. And it doesn't cost county anything. It's just a matter of a letter of support for that process going forth. So I just want to make sure that I brought that up today so that everybody knew exactly what, what that letter was. So. Anything else before we go into exec? All right. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of property acquisitions or property transfers. acquisitions or property transfers. acquisitions or property transfers.
Second. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Nicolason, seconded by Commissioner Laird. On paper, say aye. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Nicolason, seconded by Commissioner Laird. On paper, say aye. So moved. We are now in exec. So moved. We are now in exec.
All right. All meeting to order? Do we have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Motion, second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Laird, seconded by Commissioner Coats to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. Okay. Don't have any contract or agreement with the resolution, so we move into the public hearing. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration on notice of application for transfer of ownership of full retail liquor license from BFS Official LLC to TNT Property Enterprises DBA. The hearing will now be conducted according to the state statute, rules of Nettona County and other applicable laws. Madam Clerk, may we have an update?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as you stated, there's an application for a transfer of ownership of a full retail liquor license from BFS Official LLC DBA Lux to TNT Property Enterprises DBA Peyton. This location is 1910 Talc Road. The application or the transfer application was submitted and sent to the state with a minor correction requested. That correction has been done, so the state is deeming this paperwork complete. All the publication requirements have been met for this transfer, therefore I have nothing further to add unless you have questions.
Did we have any response from the public on this?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I have, excuse me, I have not heard any opposition for or against this transfer.
All right, thank you.
Who are the, who are the principals involved?
They're gonna tell us.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners Ted Thompson is the owner of TNT Property Enterprises.
Okay. All right, at this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of consideration of application for transfer to approach election. Please state your name and your address and...
My name's Ted Thompson. Address, P.O. Box 526 Casper, Wyoming, 82602. And what else did you need?
You're speaking.
I'm sorry.
My name's Tamara Stenhug. I am going to be the manager.
Sorry, little nerves here.
Yep, and just tell us what you're speaking in favor of.
He is the one that's filled out all the applications for the transfer of license.
And want to purchase the property and have the liquor licensing to TNT Property Enterprises, his name.
Talk, talk right into that microphone.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Turn it on first.
It's on, it's on.
There we go. How's that?
Yep, you gotta get close on that one.
Okay.
Just come around to the middle of it.
Yeah. All right, there you go.
Okay, um, and I'm under contract to purchase 1910 Mills, Wyoming. With that, I'm requesting to transfer the liquor license to TNT Property Enterprises. I have 15 employees out there that we have their livelihoods depend on us. We are open Tuesday through Sunday, and we are open from seven at night till two in the morning.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, all right. Appreciate it, all right?
Oh, sorry, thank you.
All right. This time I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of consideration of the application to transfer to approach election. Okay, you don't have to come back up. No, this is to give everybody else an opportunity that wants to speak too. So, at this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of consideration of the application to transfer to approach election. Okay, for the last time, ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the transfer of the consideration of the transfer license to approach election. Hearing none. At this point, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition of consideration of the application for transfer to approach election. This time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition of consideration of the application to transfer to approach election. Okay, and for the last time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to of consideration for the application of the transfer to approach election. All right, seeing none, I now close this hearing. Commissioner, discussion.
I move we approve the transfer of the liquor license.
Second.
Do we have any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. Aye.
You got the liquor license.
All right.
You're free to go.
I now, now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the notice of intent to adopt the Nettona County indigent and unclaimed burial cremation policy and application. The hearing will be conducted according to the state statute, rules of Nettona County Commission and other applicable laws. May I have a report from staff?
Commissioners, this, this has been brought up before, and obviously Lita was handling it or has been handling it. She informed me that she has nothing further to state concerning this. My understanding is that she had talked to the coroner concerning this resolution, and I think there were still some disputes about it, but she has nothing further to...
Jim, would you mind giving us a short summary?
Since the last time I spoke to you here about three weeks ago, nothing has changed. The things that needed to be changed have been changed, and in my opinion, it's about as solid as a policy as we're ever going to get, and the application as well.
Okay, any questions for the coroner?
I noticed a mortician in the back. Have you had any comments from them that they don't approve of this particular form? He's shaking his head no, that's a good thing.
Not since, uh, before the last meeting when we, we all got together and basically grammatically revised it, did some changes to it. It's, haven't heard anything in opposition since then, so...
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, at this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of consideration of the indigent and unclaimed burial cremation policy and application to approach election. This time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor, consideration of the indigent and unclaimed burial cremation policy and application to approach election. For the third time, at this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of consideration of the indigent and unclaimed burial cremation policy and application to approach election. Seeing none, at this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition of consideration of the indigent and unclaimed burial cremation policy and application to approach election. of consideration of the indigent and unclaimed burial cremation policy and application to approach election. This time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition of the consideration of indigent and unclaimed burial cremation policy and application to approach election. For the third time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition of consideration of the indigent and unclaimed burial cremation policy and application to approach election. Seeing none, I now close this hearing. Commissioner, discussion.
I move we accept the, uh, burial policies written.
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Laird to approve, seconded by Commissioner Coats. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. I now declare the public hearing open for considering of V C twenty-five dash zero-two, a request from Luke Ginsbach on behalf of Chris Barton for the variance for setback requirements of a light industrial zoning district. The property is located at fifteen oh one Scenic Drive, Lot Two, on the Aquatec simple subdivision. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with the state statute, rules of the Nettona County Commission and other applicable laws. May we have staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Uh, as you mentioned, this is case number V C twenty-five dash zero-two. The applicant is Ginsbach Construction. The property is located at fifteen oh one Scenic Street. Uh, it is a two acre minimum lot size in light industrial. The applicant is, uh, currently has a building, is running a business on this property and is seeking to build another building on the property for storage. The setbacks required, so it is next to Urban Mixed Residential. The, being next to the residential area, the required setback is a hundred feet from that residential property line. The applicant is requesting a variance to make that ten feet. The applicant, so this went through planning and zoning and the planning and zoning commission discussed it and they ended up tabling this initially. Uh, because they, so when we send out the public hearing, of course, we send out letters to the surrounding property owners and we didn't get any response from anyone, so Planning and Zoning Commission asked for the applicant to have an actual written, um, something in writing that that property owner is okay with the ten foot setback and being that close to the property line. So we did receive that letter, uh, verified from the property owner that he's okay with that ten foot setback, since he's the one that's most affected by this. So the property we're speaking of is the red, highlighted, the red rectangle area. And you can see the setbacks on the slide. The hundred feet is to the other side of the property. And with that being on that side of the property, there are trucks that come in and you can kind of see the path around the building and they drive that route, so they would essentially run straight into this new building if it were placed on that side of the lot. Uh, Planning and Zoning did ultimately, uh, recommend a due pass on this to send to you all. And the applicant is here in the audience, if you have any questions for him.
Sabrina, basically, this lot would already be in violation, is that correct? Because the side, the, where the building is, it's already closer than a hundred feet already, so, so it's not really, it's just an additional building that would be on that, on that lot, is that correct?
So, Mr. Chairman, yes, that's correct. I believe it's sixty feet from the corner of the residential lot to the current building. Uh, so it's, it would are, it's already encroaching, but it's existing, so.
Okay, and if my understanding is right, looking at the picture of the, the property, uh, to the left, my left, looking at that, um, that's not in question. That appears that that's already, that one's already, uh, closer than a hundred feet to, that building is already closer than a hundred feet from the residential as well.
Mr. Chairman, it's pretty darn close, but I don't have my, my mouth up to measure that. It, it might be within a hundred feet, but it's, it's pretty close.
Okay, all right. Any other questions for?
Mr. Chairman, um, do you know if the applicant, uh, considered changing the ingress egress to, I guess, kind of where those tanks are? To at least maximize the, uh, the setback. I know you still would have a problem with the hundred feet, but.
So, Mr. Chairman and, uh, Commissioners, the so right where, like, the words say approximate setbacks where setback set is, you can see just below that, there's a power pole that's right there, that's kind of.
Oh, okay, and you see the shadow.
Really in a, in a problem area. So that was the problem with changing that.
I remembered the power pole when they're somewhere, now that, now I can see it. Thanks.
It's hidden by that white rectangle.
You can kind of see it on this one, I guess, a little.
Any other questions for Sabrina? Okay, thank you. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of consideration of V C twenty-five dash zero-two to approach election. State your name and your address, please.
Yes, sir. I am Luke Ginsbach with Ginsbach Construction, six nine five nine East Lake Drive, Evansville, Wyoming, eight two six three six. Um, we would be the contractor for this building. Um, we have explored putting, so, right now in that current picture, uh, uh, north is down, so lower left corner is the only place we could fit less than a thirty foot wide building to meet the current setbacks. So we'd only be able to fit a thirty foot building. And right near where that power pole is, it says approximate setback right above the yellow letter. We were told by Rocky Mountain Power that it would be millions of dollars to move that power pole, cause that's a high voltage transmission line. And they said it's pretty much impossible, but it would be millions of dollars to move that power pole. And, uh, the current business does get, uh, van trailer delivery, deliveries from a semi. And if they were to, you can see their current path where they come in the lower left corner, go around the building and the left edge of the existing building is about fourteen feet, so it's extremely narrow as it is. And if we were to put a building in that lower left corner, even if we made the entrance in the lower right where the tanks are, there's no way for a semi to go around that left narrow side of the building, sneak between the two buildings, avoid a million dollar power pole and get back out. So, uh, there really is no other feasible location without just an astronomical amount of money to solve the issue and, uh, the owner of the the small house there to the lower right of the lot, we do have a letter from them stating they are fine with what we have proposed. It is a gentleman that's on the Evansville Planning and Zoning Commission, so I think he understands the whole process very well of what we're asking. And he has a letter just stating that he is approved of what we proposed, and it's also just a storage building for the existing electrical company there. And he said that he'd rather look at the back of a nice brand new building than all the stuff piled up next to his house. That, that's what he told us, so, he said that's his favorite place to put it, cause it's less traffic by his house, less stuff he has to look at and just to him and I think to most people, just a, a nicer, reasonable way to help this guy's business advance. And I don't think we have any other options on that property to do this project.
All right, thank you. All right, at this time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of consideration of V C twenty-five dash oh-two to approach election. At this time, I'd ask those who wish to speak in favor of consideration of V C twenty-five dash zero-two to approach election. Seeing none. This time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition of consideration of V C twenty-five dash zero-two to approach election. This time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition of consideration of V C twenty-five dash oh-two to approach election. For the last time, at this time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition of consideration of V C twenty-five dash zero-two to approach election. Hearing none, I now close this hearing. Commissioner, discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I would, uh, make a motion to approve, um, V C twenty-five oh-two after considering all relevant factors, including, but not limited to those set forth in the zoning resolution. I find that the variance meets the general standards required.
Second.
And, I'm sorry, and, and move to incorporate all staff findings of fact.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Nicolason, second by Commissioner Laird. Michelle, did you get all that? Okay. All right, any other discussion? My limited discussion is that I do, I think this is exactly what variances are for. To look at the whole situation and, and meet what needs to be done. Um, so at this time, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So moved. All right. This time, will we have any public comment? So we don't have anybody here, that makes it a lot easier, but I needed to say it anyway, so that everybody knew that we had the opportunity. Uh, so we don't have any public comment, move on to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Nicolason. Commissioner Laird.
Nothing.
Mr. Coats. The only thing I have to say is, um, is in reference that back in July, we had, it was brought for us that the firefighters in the Salt Creek, uh, board up there in Midwest Edgerton were in severe need of updated P P E. And this commission voted to support that. We worked very closely with Chief Oliver out of county fire to make sure that they had exactly what they needed. And the amount that we originally agreed to was a maximum of up to thirty-five thousand dollars. Chief Oliver looked around, he got the equipment that the county fire utilizes and that bill came in substantially less than that. We have since requested that we get information on their radios to see what needs to be updated and see if the cost is associated with that. We haven't heard anything back at this point in time. But I am happy to say that they do have the equipment that they need, other than a few odd, odd sizes that are backordered, uh, that they'll have to get in, but everybody else has what they need. Um, and that's always good to hear, so. Don't have anything?